Are we ready? Good day, everybody, and welcome to the meeting of the DHPAR. And the first thing we need to do is to salute the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next note is that our vice chair is not physically present with us, but she's gonna be on Zoom.
Oh, it's a good idea.
So hopefully she'll join us in progress, but we have enough to people present to transact the business of the day. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November tenth twenty twenty-two meeting. All in favor? That was unanimous. And next I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for two oh seven Madison Street. Are there any representatives here?
So we're gonna open the public hearing and then we're going to return it because the applicant also has to hold it.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the public hearing for two oh seven. I did. Yes. And now to table it. The me, the public hearing.
Table the public hearing.
I second that. All in favor? Okay, so things move faster than we thought. So the next we have the consent agenda. Judith, did you have any things that you think did not?
I already told Carrie she took it off.
Okay.
Just one thing.
The one on twenty-sixth A Street, it's not a new sign, it's just an awning.
Right, okay. The new sign is coming, so. I'll read the consent agenda, then someone can make a motion to approve it or to vote on it. Number one is ten Grand Street, which was the appropriateness for proposed new windows. I did want to, I have a note here, Zach. Can you just look and verify that that is not? I'm sorry, it's nineteen Grand Street.
You gotta look at your new agenda.
Thank you. Sorry. Can't get this thing to turn on. And it's my wife, this is dangerous.
Isn't there something you can pinch on the side that will totally?
No, but then watch my confirmation. I know what she's calling me about. Okay, so I'll read the remaining consent agenda items. Fifty-seven Suffolk Street, and that's for the appropriateness for proposed new roof. Sixty-one Redwood Road, and Zach, just verify again for me that that's not a historical. Historic.
No, it's if Redwood, so it's not.
Okay, so fine. So then, no, Redwood, what I was getting, going back to fifty-seven Suffolk Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't check because it was on the consent. Just give it a quick.
Right, I just wanted to.
It is contributing, but it's just a new roof.
Right, but she's, isn't she changing from?
From shingle.
Cedar shingle.
Shingle to.
To.
Yeah.
Which seems, I mean, we've done that before. To.
So she's, she's doing a asphalt. Didn't we only do that last time because?
It was a water emergency.
It was that, and it was a economic, what do we give her economically?
And I think third, that it wasn't in the description of her country or her description of the property, if I remember correctly.
And these people said financial hardship for them.
Well.
Which is a procedure that they would have to initiate, but this expedites.
Yeah.
Typically, if that is cited, then that's taken.
Oh.
You know, seriously, and. It's good to have a color. Yeah, that mossy. That mossy look. You don't get that overnight.
Right.
You gotta grow that.
You gotta grow that.
You gotta grow that. Well, you know, that asphalt's gonna do the same thing if it's not maintained.
Right.
They're buying about ten, fifteen years.
I mean, the other thing, it seems to me that do you have a picture of the front of the house? Because when I looked at it, my feeling was that that's not really visible from the street. Right?
That was a point that they made also, that they didn't think it was visible.
Of the roof kind of important to the historic quality, though?
They are. Can you read the description for us?
Yeah, we're at fifty-seven Suffolk. Two-story, two-bay frame residence, two over two, light wooden sash, brick foundation, gabled roof with overhanging eaves. These descriptions never say what the material of the roof is. Unless it's something unusual, like a tin roof or something. So if it's a wood, I mean, they'll often, here it says novelty siding on the front side, asbestos tingles on the side.
Hmm, yeah, it looks like a head.
That, that's a new thing. But they don't, that's, that's it, I mean, so.
So maybe the appropriate thing for us to do is to ask for them to. Is there a process for making hardship plea? I don't remember.
There is under the code, there's a, you know, but usually that, as I recall, it comes as a result of a with no approval. So in other words, you deny the application, and then the applicant comes back with an economic hardship, which is a provision that can find an exception to your ruling, so it's a more time.
It's an appeal, it was, it's a guaranteed appeal.
I think if you can't see it from the road, then.
This, if you're, if you expect to approve this, you know, because of various conditions, then perhaps to expedite it without having to go through at least one or two more hearings, it would seem like you'll get to the same place.
I thought it was okay because you can't see it, it's a hardship, of course, that has to be separate, okay? You can't see it, and also, I don't think I'm aware that we categorically say that every historic house has to have cedar shingle roof. Okay, and so um, I would think that asphalt roof would be okay on this house.
Okay, so I'm fine with that, Megan? So Judith, if you, are you with us, Judith?
What?
Bethany, are you with us?
She keeps trying to get in, she has.
Okay. All right, so would someone like to make him, oh, let me finish reading, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So that was number two, right? Okay. Where did I leave off? I'm sorry.
Sixty-one Redwood.
I did that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so twenty-six Bay Street was a certificate of appropriateness for proposed new sign.
It's not a new sign, it's an awning.
Okay.
We can approve the awning.
Yeah. So that's the restaurant. And one seventy-four Main Street, which is appropriateness for a proposed tree removal. And they seem to be really diseased trees. And the last one is seventy-two Walker is an application for the renovation of the dwelling, which is beyond our scope, and a no septic system, so I, so I think those three, those things are appropriate. Can I get a motion to approve them?
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda items. And be sure that the number three says awning instead of sign.
Okay.
What is seventy-two Walker? I see a renovation.
Seventy-two Walker is a dilapidated deserted house, hasn't been occupied for twenty, at least two decades. And there were some fits and starts on renovating it. And it just didn't happen. The family that owns it is in Arizona, but they've decided, for whatever reason, I'm not familiar why.
Are we approving a designer?
Can you hear me?
Hi.
Hi, I'm representing the Labos family.
Oh, very good.
Can you state your name, just, and, and address, just for the record?
Yes, my name is Rosemary Perry, and my sister is Yvonne Ramos. I live in New York. And so I'm representing the family in this renovation and no septic system.
Mr. William?
Yeah.
It's a consent agenda, and do you, do you want it?
Right, but we're approving something that it might totally change the exterior of the house, right?
Well, yes, just so you.
Actually, we are bringing, we're bringing the house back to its original footprint and status, removing, removing violations. I provided large photographs so that you could see. There was an extension placed in the existing driveway that is gonna be removed, so it will be brought to code. Also, there's a photo of the side where there are cinder blocks. All of those cinder blocks are being removed, and railing will be put up. Of course, siding. And.
It just seems like a big thing to just pass without looking at it, right? I think they were looking.
I got the impression that they were simply getting rid of the rot and covering, you know, putting a new stuff on. Yeah, and, and.
And what they're doing is they have some non-code compliant modifications they made, they're returning it back, so it'll be compliant with the code.
Okay.
So, so thank you for that, and I'm a neighbor of yours, so love to see some activity.
Yeah.
And do we have anything else on the consent agenda?
That was it.
So we had the motion. I seconded it. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? So that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing you soon.
Right.
So we have under old business, the next presentation we're looking for is one fifty-two Division Street. Is someone here representing that? Good evening.
This, this is simply a memo that I'm just gonna tick through that, that elaborates on the revisions that we made.
Oh, thank you.
We will ask for you.
Okay.
And it's a couple of photographs too of a neighbor, of two neighbor houses that deal with the porch and railing that we have revised. Thank you. So, and then we have we have the elevations on board, in case you don't have to of your print, and I also do a couple of copies of the print. But basically, I'll just start checking through this and discuss anything. Whatever you'd like to discuss here. So what we did is we reduced the size of the porch in the back of the house, as you recall. We pulled it in, it was six feet of depth, and we presented, presented, and I handed in some files to Carrie. We pulled it in from sixty to four feet depth. We have pulled the ends of it in, the north, the shorter ends, two foot six on the north end and one foot eight, I believe it is on the south end. We have changed the cable railing to a more modern cable railing to a traditional white painted railing that is very similar to what you see in what the attached photos there, that will be very, if approved, very similar to that. Let's see, we porch. We have revised the roof line per your suggestion, which aesthetically, you think was a good suggestion, and when we end up doing it, it was even better than we we had hoped, we really think it helps the elevations, especially the south and the and the north whereby we depress the ridge two feet, and it better articulated kind of the, the volume there.
Two oh two? Excuse me, we're looking at two oh two? Existing south and proposed south?
Roof line at the center of the house on two oh two. So this back extension is now yeah, is, has dropped below the ridge of the existing. All right. You know. Oh, yeah. That's right. Our elevation is on, on two oh two on the bottom, as you can see, that basically there's a connector piece of the gable that we dropped, hide of this gable back behind, which kind of differentiates the new addition on the back of the house, and leaves the existing structure sort of a little bit more intact and a little bit more as it was.
Think of it more prominent, and yeah, kind of stands out more than here, yeah.
And then on the back of the house, as John just mentioned, that we basically, as we pulled in, the depth used to go, used to about six feet, now it just goes out four feet. And we pulled it in a couple, two and a half feet or so on both sides, so it's much more inboard. And we replaced it. Two oh one, bottom.
Yeah, but. Right.
So it's not, the area is not big enough to really furnish out here, it's just meant, it's just meant to, there's very small rooms that we went to just have a little bit of space that you can open to have a little bit more daylight, have some floor-to-ceiling glass, and not necessarily spend time out there, just extending these smaller rooms.
Yeah, this was the one you guys had the shower in between.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Yeah, we took away the, we took away the whole shower.
The whole.
Yeah.
The whole thing. Let's see, in between. Yeah, right here, it used to be the shower.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And the higher fence.
This is cleaner.
Yeah. And you'll notice that we by pulling in the east and the south and the north ends, it, it nicely composes with the casing around the windows there, and we actually took away a window, I probably not all this, we took away a window on the, on that west side. That was just a shed, you know, that's now a screen porch, and the closet is an unheated space. So we took away the window on the interior of the house, the west elevation, I think that helped the elevation as well. Just having that simple little shed, shed come off there. Yeah, there's a window for the previous one that is a window there.
Yeah, I think it looks better.
Yeah. Thank you.
I was just saying.
And then, let's see, the roof line, and then we met Zachary Skudenroth, and, and member Beth Geerman, kind enough to come to the site. And perhaps Zachary can maybe discuss with, taking on the, on the, on the, thinking on the existing windows, but before we get to that, just on the memo, I'll note that we discussed eliminating the shutters, the owners are here, Asia and Alister, and Lux are here as well. But they would really like to keep the shutters, so what we're proposing to do there would be to build, replacing kind, but just make sure they're a nice wood, you know, a nice wood shutter. We want to make them in nature to wider, so we can physically have, they can physically close them and use them if they have a lot for a bad storm, ratchet or something.
And they'll, they'll look right, because if they're too narrow, they don't.
They're decorated.
Whether you're using them or not.
Exactly. More is gonna be much better.
Yeah.
Do you have a color in mind?
Yeah, we do, and it's noted on the elevation on the side, it would be a light gray, very light gray, which we think is better than that red. And while we're on the front of the house as well. Zachary and Beth also wrote, the front stoop is, I think he has these, that, facial boards, it's, and Zachary is, it's dark at all. And we are proposing, actually Asia's father is a beautiful stoneworker, that's his business. And we're proposing to do a nice thick, like, six or eight inch slab of bluestone that we, and a bluestone step that, that, again, Zachary and Beth, when you're four down, there's one that you approve that has the big thick slab of.
Yeah, they used to do that for like a stoop.
Yeah, exactly, so we would like to propose that we do that here as well. He'd actually be going to the bluestone patio, and that's where I can feel, because that's his business. So that's, that's the front of the house, and then maybe Zachary, do you want to comment on, take on the windows or?
Sure, I'll just mention that first my apologies to the board, because I only managed to send you an email today. So if you haven't checked your emails, you didn't get that. I thought I sent it out two weeks ago, and that's not actually true. We, we, Beth, Bethany, I had a tour of the interior of the house, which is quite interesting, one reason being that this is a group revival period house, and oftentimes, there's an interior treatment of the window openings that's associated with the windows, and it's an easier way to determine if they're original or not, and this house happens to have lovely panelled treatment beneath the windows inside, and that verifies the width of the opening as being correct. Not only on the front, I think you had said that your proposal had been to retain the windows on the front, but you were looking to change them on the side.
Exactly, I can get to that, but yes.
Okay, so, and it's interesting, you're seeing six over one, and we see this from time to time. At some point in its history, this house, these are the original sashes, but someone decided to pop the muntens out from the lower sashes to get a single pane, so that was a way of modernizing this house, probably at the early part of the last century. So those are original, and I was just recommending, glad that they want to keep the, the front. I think we, we discussed the possibility, because you have code issues related to egress from the second story.
Right.
That, and you can say what you've come up with.
Sure.
To simulate the look of the windows and yet comply with the code in terms of egress, so I think that's your.
Exactly, so thank you. Thank you, Zachary, once again.
Sure.
So, yes, so we are, as, as these windows do not go back, we are planning on keeping the locations, replacing in kind in the openings. And on the front of the house, and on the sides, which would be the south is the driveway, the north is the other side yard. Two things we're proposing, when we were there with Zachary, in the front room on the driveway side, the south elevation, there's a fireplace that we are, that's not functioning, that we are proposing to take down, and we want to restore the other one, re-point it, keep it exactly the same articulation of the bricks, but re-point it, make it safe. But where, on the right side of the fireplace, there is a closet that we filled, and if you look at the elevations, you see that we feel very strongly that when we get into this, if we, if you took away the, the inside, you would see that there used to be a window there, because it and we're proposing, if you look on the elevations, the south elevation, to add that, that window, we think they put that window out to put the closet in, they have this apartment, and we also think they moved the window on the second floor on the north side, in the hallway, to accommodate bedrooms for that apartment, because, and we'd like to just shift that window over to where we think it it was, still cement long gable, it, you know, below the pyramid of window, and and it's been demolished. So, yeah, so that's, 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 that's what we'd like to do, and then there is one more window in the back, it's in the back of the older, on the second floor, on the south side, we would like to add that window to that bedroom, and those two windows would both be casement windows, so that they would comply to egress codes, so in other words, instead of our double hung, with the small opening, we have a casement window that would mimic the double hung, we'd make a bigger bar, we do the six over one.
They're sure to six over one, though.
Exactly, we would do that, yeah, and we would.
Oh, they would.
Operation.
It would be a single unit that would open.
And it just meets the, it meets the egress code of the naked basement, I think that was Beth's suggestion.
Because as it is now with a double hung, you only have either the top or the bottom.
Exactly.
You gotta have.
Exactly. Could you get that a little closer?
Sure.
This is great, because it's like before and after, before and after, and all on the same page.
Right, yeah.
Excellent.
We're talking about the back.
So this.
Yeah.
Existing.
And this exists.
The step of the roof.
Right, but I think what you said.
Balance is for windows over here, right now.
Should we build it? Get rid of it?
Actually, sorry.
Should we demolish it?
This, something over here is not quite from the original building, is this sort of odd location that they.
I'm not sure about that.
Everything was kind of more of a group revival, looked quite shaker and then now it's over, so we can, that was, so that's what we're proposing to basically.
Looks, yeah, much better.
That side, or better plan, because that on the elevation.
I think he wants to demolish the one on the left side.
The one closest to the east side, yeah, the closest, it's one of the chimneys.
Oh, yes. You're gonna take that down?
Yeah.
And then rebuild it, but not as high?
No, we're not gonna rebuild, just taking it down, and.
Oh, taking it down.
But the chimney, oh, yeah, yeah, the defunct, yes. And then we're just going to re-point the one that we're keeping. Yeah.
So this one over here is good, it's no longer, there's not even a fireplace in there, it's just the south taken out, so this is the one that.
So there'll be one fireplace inside, yeah.
The one in the main city.
Yeah.
I'm just comparing the height of the drawings of and this being the proposed, because what's existing, you're adjusting that, but the height of the chimney that you're retaining on the north elevation sheet two oh three is just considerably shorter than it's shown on the south, and I'm not sure. That could just be a drafting.
That could be a drafting area, we're not changing any.
That's actually beyond, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So the north, okay, so just to be clear, the two oh three, the north elevation is not correct?
If we can revise that, yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I don't know.
Yeah, we won't change the height.
Well, they, they have a line showing the horizontal height.
Yes.
And it's obscuring the chimney face. Is that what's happening?
I just.
Yeah. It's not really on this elevation, it's beyond.
Okay.
That's on, it's on the south side, it's on the other side.
Right.
But it rises above the ridge, so you see it.
It is.
Yeah, and it's gotta be three feet above, either way, it's gotta be feet above, I think within ten feet, so it's.
It's just on sheet two oh one, the height of that chimney is not three feet, that looks like ten feet. That's a very tall chimney, and that's probably not drawn.
Probably a drafting area.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, that's. All right.
Yeah, that would be three feet above that line.
Okay. Gotcha.
So it's kind of just a cap.
Have we touched on your?
I think we've touched, I believe we've touched on, on it.
Okay, I'm gonna ask one more time, Bethany, where? She's not getting on, okay. Judith or Megan, do you have, I think I get a sense with, with Zach and Chris saying, do you have any comments to ask?
No, I think all the improvements are good, and I appreciate that you took everything you shared into consideration and acted on it.
I think it makes it better.
Yeah, good.
I do too.
And I can do, I can live with the shutters, especially if they're gray.
Yeah, light gray too.
And they're functional, they're not just.
Yeah, real, they're real, they're not fake, so that's good.
So can I get a motion?
Motion to approve one fifty-two Division Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Megan, are you in aye?
Yes, and I.
So that's unanimous.
Wow, thanks, I appreciate it. Thanks for your.
Thank you, I, we appreciate you being flexible and and giving us full consideration for the suggestions that we made.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, twenty-one Lincoln Avenue, anyone here to represent that?
It is cool, yeah.
Anyone to represent remotely? Is there anyone here to represent? If I remember, we approved their plan for construction, but I thought we were waiting for landscaping to come back.
We didn't want to approve anything until.
Till.
Everything.
Okay, so I move that we first, we'll second call this, and then if, if they're not, we'll table it for the next.
I didn't hear from them twenty-five Bluff Point Road either, so I reached out to them.
Well, let's just double check, there's no one here in the audience who's being shy, twenty-five Bluff Point Road, is there anybody here? Okay. Okay, so I move that we table both of those, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, once again. Unanimous, okay.
For the record, our next meeting is December twenty-second.
Right. Okay. So then we're down to twenty-nine Robeson Boulevard. Is there anyone here to represent?
Yes.
Good evening. Good, and your name please?
My name is Iannis Bernatels.
We're short one, but we'll work. So, why don't you bring us up to date with what your plans are, how you've modified them, please? So, so just to be clear, you're gonna move it from the original proposal, which was facing the street, to you'll have exposure to the solar panels being from the rear of the house?
These look, uh, very flush with the roof. Not on racks, are they? They look very flush with the roof.
Yes, they are.
Yeah. Usually they, like, sit off the roof.
Yeah, you know what, these, this is a shingled roof or is this architecture?
You know?
Um, I believe it's shingled.
So I think what, what he's saying is, you probably want to have a air gap there, so that they can dry.
I was just curious, because, you know.
Because it seems that it, moisture could enhance the deterioration of the shing.
I think it's just the ones that use it, I was just curious about that.
Okay. Any thoughts or concerns? Uh, any questions from the board?
What was it? Models on this amount of racking. That's what I'm saying, it's just a pad. What is this amount of racking? That's the little, that would be what the panels are sitting on.
Um, is there a spec on it?
Uh, yeah, that's what we're looking at, and it just appears to be, they're like, um-
Depth one point five seven inches.
The depth, so that's the thickness of them. Thickness of the-
I don't think, I'm, I was just curious, because usually when I'm ever done solar, you know, they're on like a standoff racks and things for, and stuff to get inside. But other than that, I think it's fine. I agree. Judith, Megan, do you have any thoughts or questions?
Um, she was fine to me.
Yeah, I remember, actually the rear yard has some pretty tall trees. I don't think it's even visible from the rear yard, unless they have to be cut to maximize time of exposure. Um, so I will take a motion to approve modifications on, um, twenty-nine Robinson Boulevard. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify, aye?
Aye.
So, me? Thank you.
So it must be built in.
I made the motion and who's second?
Built in.
I think I move. I want to move a second, who's second?
Oh, me, sorry.
Okay, so let's wrap this up, I think we need to make room here. So, the next on Old Business is fifty-five Howard Street. Who's here to represent them? Zach, can we pass this down?
No one's here for that, they are, um, in front of ZBA also, so.
Yeah, I think they should, should get approval from ZBA before we really tackle it, yeah. So, um, can we ta- table that until they've had their, um, perceived the direction from ZBA? With, with the approved zoning modifications, if, if they're, if they're granted?
We need a motion to that? Motion to table fifty-five Howard Street.
I'll second. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna close Old Business and we're gonna move on to New Business. And the first is the representative of two oh six Division Street.
Carrie, 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 I heard of that, sorry, thank you.
Your voice sounds just like Laura.
Okay, please tell us, please tell us who's presenting.
Hi, uh, David Zuma, property management.
Okay, so you're not the owners?
No.
Okay, architects? No, property managers?
Builders, yeah.
Builders, okay. Thank you. So tell us what you're gonna do to Division Street. It's, um, let me see, I'm sorry, should have read, a certificate for proposed new windows, oh, that's simple, okay.
This is a contributing-
Okay.
House.
Yeah, so it could be a problem.
So what, what type of windows are you proposing?
So we have the Anderson Real Estate, ladies and gentlemen, across the street.
Is this the one-story house?
No, that's a private property.
It's the same property.
The Google Maps gets a little squirrely.
Yeah.
That was two oh five Division, right across the street.
Those are the windows we're proposing.
So, are the windows still functional?
No, the windows that were taken out.
They've already been taken out?
They have been taken out.
Have they been?
I came, I came to this, uh, kind of like, the permit is actually under the homeowner.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so I kind of came in with a different understanding of what the permit was under. And, um, found out later on that we weren't really supposed to do that, um, after it was done, but-
The windows saved?
Uh, they were, they were, I did see them taken out, so I made sure that the windows were put off to the side, but, yeah.
So the windows still exist?
And they still dis-
Are they under covering of some sort, or are they just?
No, they're under covering, they're in the back, yeah, just here. Okay.
Sorry, what is this, is this the house?
No, that's right.
No, I was gonna say, yeah, because this looks like a new house.
Right, yeah, that's right across the street, and the homeowner, I, I said we should do the windows like that, they obviously got approved.
So this, this is serving as an inspiration?
Yes.
What does it say in the, um, registry about the, about the window?
Well, it says that it has two over two light wooden sash. Now that doesn't, in a description like this, we don't know when those windows date from. They, they are the type of window, this is an eighteen-fifties house. Um, the type of window that might have been replaced later, you know, in the eighteen-eighties or nineties or something. Uh, not likely original, but we'd have, take a look at them, if they're out on this sidewalk, we could find it.
No, they're removed.
Right. Well, these are windows in the house. Or they were removed.
There we go. Yeah, it says, this little guy, I did see it, yeah, it's charming. Uh, to say, and, so I think we'd wanna see what those windows are all about. Because sometimes they've been updated, they're not old, you know, you don't really know. But I think it'd be good to take a look.
So, so just for context for you, we're very concerned about the, the view from the street. And, and one of the things we're, we're pretty, uh, firm about is restoring windows that are original.
Yeah.
Or have been even a vintage of over fifty years old. So we wanna take a look at that.
Yeah.
And I don't think we, I think Zach could do a site visit, I don't think we need other people to come.
No, I don't think so, I mean, I can-
So we'd like to-
Zach, report back.
Do you, um, I landed outside?
Yeah, yeah, they're in the back, I could take them, they were in the shed, so we can- Okay, so.
Take them all out or whatever. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, no, I'm from, I live here all my life, so I-
Okay, okay.
Just to visit the Stanley with the homeowner and my guys.
Great.
About how much construction we were actually doing.
Okay, wonderful. So, so yeah, you, please just set up between you and Zach.
Sure.
Thank you for being understanding and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
I think we have to motion to table it.
Yeah, we'll motion to table it, thank you, Chris. Uh, per, per Zach's inspection, and we'll table it to the next meeting.
I'm up at five.
Well.
So nothing will scare me.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for-
Okay. Who is here?
Uh, motion to table, um, two oh six Division Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're at eleven Grand Street.
So, um, the applicant just came up and told me that they are possibly, uh, they're, they're adjourning. At first it was possible, and then he just came and said that, um, one of the applicants is unable to present, so they're going to adjourning tonight.
Okay, so, so let's move to table that to the next meeting. I'll move to table it for the next meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tabled. And someone thought this was gonna be a long meeting.
So tabled.
Okay, so. I see some people that recognize you in the audience, we're gonna give a presentation sooner or later. Um, the next is forty-one Glover Street, is there anyone here to represent that?
Here we go.
There we go. Oh, two oh six Division, lingering here, can you guys just stick that in there?
Yeah. How we doing?
Good.
Please, uh, let us know who you are.
Ryan, I'll pass it with the Adamola Group, two four six two Main Street, you're the applicant. I stated we're here for forty-one Glover Street. Um, we are receiving a certificate of appropriateness to make modifications to the prior approval, um, as well as the additional small, um, improved solar panels. We have put together an exhibit of showing what is previously approved, as well as proposed, where we highlighted, whether hand mark, so you can walk through the changes for, um, ease in doing. I apologize if they're not in the same piece, but if you look at age one, that's the age two, um, little bit side by side image. All the changes are, with the exception of the lantern on the front facade, are all, um, non-disruptible in the street. So, it's all structured here, long road. So, I think you just kind of walk through it.
Okay, uh, let's see, did you include a survey here? I appreciate you bubbling this. Sorry, I asked for that.
No, it's okay, it's, um-
Makes it a bit busy.
The side, you know, small copper roof, or just courses of, um, single roof, and kind of the connector portion of all of that. Um, the slight change to the pitch of the roof overhang, um, on the rear.
Yeah.
But it, it's good on the full-size plans.
Side by side, yeah.
One day I'll have the perfect certificate, but it's-
Yeah, this is more like scalded, bubble, just kind of, or circled or whatever, but, but, you know, this is, it's just because there's a lot going on, and, and it's, uh, it's accentuating that. Um, so south. Yeah, south.
Yeah.
South.
So on the south end of the roof, overhang is gonna be a, a flat, instead of a pitched single overhang.
This is the rear.
This would be the rear from the water.
Okay.
And this is new construction?
Yeah, it's under construction.
Oh, this, this is the one that's been under construction for a long time?
Yes.
Oh, this, is this the one with the stockwork on it?
Well.
So some brief context, this was approved via Supreme Court order going to waterfront moratorium. So the plans were, I wouldn't say completed at that time, as the court approved, so I was kind of moving along with construction. Um, some modifications were needed as requested the applicant, and that's kind of where we are now to just, in, in my opinion, minor changes, but of course, um, you know, we need to flush them out and make sure you're okay with them.
Truthfully, at this scale, there's so much going on here. It's very, very hard to distinguish between what was approved and- So if you could just verbal, there seems to be in the, what was approved thing, when looking at the south elevation.
Yep.
Okay, there's some sort of a, I guess, a roof that, is that an awning, it's shingled, it's a roof over that?
It's a roof overhang, so if you look at-
Overhang, and that's, and that's been taken away.
It, it hasn't been taken away, it went from a pitched single roof to a flat overhang, with, um, the arms to support being angled up towards the roof. You can see it on the next, the next elevation.
We're talking about the back?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So this is the water side?
This is the water side, correct, so.
Okay.
Unless you think someone's gonna be offended from the water, I don't think this is, yeah, part of the, like, we just got her.
So.
I would tend to agree, but I don't want that.
Just, you know. So that's, that's the back.
And then there's some minor changes to the siding.
So just let me ask you this, south elevation number six, and south elevation number four.
Yep.
These are two different sections of the house?
Yeah, and there's somewhat like a connector, an hour part of the house.
That's a connector, it's a cutaway.
Wouldn't likely see the south elevation four many at this point, other than immediately in front of it?
Oh, I see what you mean.
That's a section.
And like similar, when we look at from the north elevation, almost all of this is invisible, and the whole point was to keep it subordinate to the roof structure.
I guess, I think what's really important is driving down the street, driving down Glover Street, aside from that really, really small, original old house. Uh, representation. What of, what, what, what's, what's gonna look different from the side? Because this house extends immensely long.
Yeah.
So that, that's been approved, but how, how is, I'm just curious, what is, what's new?
So, looking at north elevation's five and three, that's kind of the street view, you can see there's a faint dotted line as to whether it was minus.
North elevation.
It's on that same page where we're just on for, or at least on what I presented today.
North elevation.
Five?
I'm up C and five.
Five is the lower of the page, lower left-hand side. But what's confusing is the-
Oh.
So there's this dotted line here, that's kind of the, the roof, could you see the addition?
Yeah.
We're proposing three new windows on that section, it's the center section of the house. So there may be a, a minor-
Do you want to see that window?
Possibly a very minor amount.
I'm gonna recommend no on that one. Just trying to hold on to some semblance of this house, which has gone off in all sorts of tangents. To, to look above the roof of that little guy, when in fact, the entire addition might well have sat below that ridge, which I realize sounds impractical, because it's a one-story house. But nevertheless, here's this ridge, right, here's this ridge rising up, and there's gonna be a little window sitting there. Hmm. I, how necessary is that to the habitation of, are we standing up again?
You're talking, I'm, we're just gonna get it.
Here we are.
We're on two hundred.
We're on two hundred.
And we're, we're on, so, number five.
Yeah, so that's the north elevation, it's just the ridge.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see, so five and three, this is.
Correct, so this window will be where your finger is.
And it's gonna be a little more.
And then there's a second, and there's this second ridge? No, what's the dotted line?
Well, that's the ridge of what's being built.
And so they want to put a window in there.
So, here's a dotted line that looks like another ridge.
This, this, this right here is what is sailing up above.
Yeah.
This.
The window's going in here.
A little window to sit right there.
But this creates like depths, so that that ridge will be further back.
Yeah, that's correct, yep.
So there's a ridge sticking up here and they want to put a window in it.
This is the side elevations, you can't see.
So we stand up in that space?
I have, I have a gigantic space.
Right. So. To me, I mean, I just feel that there are probably eighty-three windows. Of about twenty-seven to the size, just estimate, maybe I'm exaggerating. But there are a lot of windows.
Right.
Uh, going on this house and the objective of the board would be to, to the extent that it can preserve the original house. And it's feeling. And what's happened is that extensions have been approved to quadruple the size of this. Whatever they do. And yet now, we're adding to that, popping a little window into an attic space. That will be seen from the street, the only facade of this original house that is still preserved is what faces the street. And now a window is in that. And insulting.
Would like to remove the window.
This is my suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Is that where we all stand? Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, okay. I don't know how busy we are, the point is taken. Make a note of that on the next client.
Anything that can unbusy.
Yeah, I guess that's.
The only other change to the front beside, if you look at elevation five on same A two hundred, we're proposing a gas, uh, fuel lantern by the front door.
Yeah, we're not big fans of those guest things. I don't like.
And it's not the only one that goes on the south.
You like gas lamps? I detest gas lamps.
Now we're becoming a village of, of, of gas lanterns.
Which was, is completely ahistorical, because of course they didn't have any in those days. So all these little gas lamps are like little Disneyland things that people want to put on their houses.
And, and we have denied that recently.
We've denied a few, but many have been approved, so it's.
There are some on the street in close proximity.
Yeah, actually, yeah, Glover is becoming the gas, the gas lamp street. Okay.
Yeah, we got them.
You on Main Street, yeah.
You only changed the front facade, one you have approved. And I think it'll be reason why a light by the front door. Um.
There's other technologies.
Well, just in that same vein, like, they didn't have electric lights back then either, so.
We all know that.
He was a little older.
Yeah.
Well, I think whale oil would be good, actually, it would be very Sag Harbor.
We'd have to farm out. Gotta go Japan.
How about, um, fake whale oil?
Fake whale.
Yeah.
Seals, dolphins.
Everyone's looking, joining, it's an interest in everyone's time, I think we can proceed. So moving up to the top right corner of A two hundred. Um, this is the south elevation, kind of all the center. So what you'll see, really won't be behind the, um, elevation six we discussed, but we're changing, um, the proposed siding, verticals. With vertical siding where it was board and batten on the upper portion.
Which are both technically vertical siding anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see, what is the difference actually?
It's probably tongue and groove and board and bat.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
One has boars and one has battens.
That is efficient.
I see.
A door and a fixed window, and a- as you can see on elevation six on the top left, you'll be able to see the slight corner of the door. I can come show you if needed, but, so this door and window we're proposing here. Will actually be seen from the water side.
Mm-hmm.
And that you can see there's a small portion of the door that's visible.
Yeah, I'd like to turn our attention back to what you see from the street.
Yeah, okay, but I'm.
What is, what does the door go to?
Probably the kitchen.
Yeah.
Now we have the attorney here, not the architect.
The door that he's talking about is the section of the house where the two meet each other. The, this is like a bree, not breezeway, but.
Yeah.
The connector, and then there's the other parts of the building starts here, and that's that door. So it's gonna be like a, basically, we don't see it.
Yeah.
You don't see.
So let's move to the street elevation, which is.
I mean, the street elevation, the only change that is visible is the.
I'm just asking you which sheet it's on right now.
That's, um.
It's on the, it was on the page, right?
Eight two hundred point zero one.
Okay, I'm on that. Thank you.
That was previously approved, but eight two hundred is.
Discussing, the only change, as we discussed, if we were.
You're on A two, two oh one.
Right.
That's it. Go, I think it's one of the first pages.
Uh-huh. Two hundred, is that where you want me?
And then, um, drawing three north elevation or north section elevation, which is the center. Which is Christian was explaining, uh, we discussed, we're gonna remove the top one now. That is the visible portion from the street. Otherwise, this, this portion's elevation is completely shielded by the reserve structure.
I mean, you're still gonna see the roof line, right?
Roof line, yeah, the roof lines are even improved.
Talking about.
No, no, I got.
You can't really see it, because they.
Right. All right, all right, I got it, I'm just.
Very lightly done.
I'm telling you, how, how are we doing? I really didn't appreciate this before. The addition is not, are we saying that because it's, it's so, because of the breeze? That we're going to clearly identify where the new addition is? And therefore. We're not making it subordinate?
Well, that's all been decided.
So, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just second guessing.
Producing actually creates a separation in the group period on the. Reserve structure to be weighing off all of the connector to be, um, addition in the back.
Well, if we've made that mistake, we've made that mistake, somehow we got talked into it. Um, so is that our own comment? You have a good idea for these things.
Um. I really don't, I guess, I, I just would like anything that calms this all down a little bit, makes it as simple as possible. It seems awfully busy.
Well, I agree with that. I, I think their, I think their argument is that.
They haven't really touched the front of the house.
So.
I said that they haven't really touched the front of the house.
Right, except for the gas lamp.
And the window, which I would think back.
We can call them Disney, Disney lamps for now.
Right. Um. Anyone want to make a motion? Are there any more questions, Megan, you have a question?
So there's this, um, only other thing is we are proposing a solar panel on the flat roof portion of the connector, I'll call it. Again, it's gonna be within the two ridge lines, so will not be visible from the street. That's on section A two oh one.
Well, how, how many kilowatts are you gonna get out of that? I mean, just what's.
It's a small area.
That's what I'm saying, how, can power like your computer and a cell phone.
Right.
I don't really need to get them.
Yeah.
I was just curious, because just doesn't seem like a.
Four inches in width, um, it's only on the flat portion of your roof, it will not be visible from the street or the water. The four inches in.
Huh.
Oh, oh, thickness, yeah.
Thick, thickness.
Okay. Depth, yeah.
Gotcha.
So I'm, this is out rail, to answer your question from the board.
Ah, oh, that's the latest. Um, in racking. What'd you say? Yeah, you won't see that.
So they're really not doing anything to the front?
The gas lantern and the windows, the only other potential, um, visible change from the big front of the plant.
Are they gonna paint it or like refurbish the stoop or the path?
According to the existing, there's already approval for the house and, other than what I'm discussing.
It's already done, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah.
And we said no to the window.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
What's the thinking behind, um, the vertical siding?
I don't, it was an aesthetic. I, I don't know the actual, um.
Design.
Their desired design.
And what color will it be?
I don't know, but it'll be the exact color that is already on the approval of the existing, um, board and batten. It's just a basic bump from, or horizontal, or first person.
Well, we, I'm assuming we approved the color, I just don't remember.
I don't either.
I don't even think I was on the board at that point.
No, this is a long time ago. This is before me.
Oh, good, I was worried about. For the dinosaurs. All right, all right. Anybody have an idea when this was approved? Because that makes me.
I'm okay with it. Under the condition that we remove the window. Five seconds, approved by forty-one Glover Street.
Okay.
I will get you a.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Change it as always.
Run to the bathroom.
Okay, so we're gonna take a five-minute pause before the presenter for Richard Drive comes up. And Judith. Be acting.
Oh, um, okay.
You said.
So we're, we're signing this?
Uh-huh. This is what I'm first.
That's Robinson, that's the.
Oh, the solar panels.
Yeah.
I missed those, sign of the stamping.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, what's going on with that? No more stamping?
It has the trappings of.
Right.
Authority.
Other that?
No, these are the consent agenda ones, just trying to get signed on.
Okay, good, good. Well, the only one we left is Grand Street, right? Two. We have, we have Richard's Drive and then.
Richard's, Metal Lark and Grant.
Oh, I missed Metal Lark, okay.
Oh, what's today? Eight, nine?
The.
Eight.
Okay.
All right, you want to turn that, we'll do the rest.
Okay. So we called the meeting back to order. Um. Is there anyone here to represent Richard's Drive?
Yes.
Okay, please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Peter Overton, my name is Peter Overton, I'm the architect representing the owners of, uh, Richard's Drive. The owners are great and helpful people. I know these, these plans are.
We, we should, should we spring for an easel? Exercise.
Exercise. Okay, so, um, I'm not sure if you had, uh, the, 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 the property or the. So, uh, as you can see, I was like walking past or walking through quickly, um. Basically, uh, we are, uh, taking an existing house, uh, house is built, but I believe it's mid to late eighties, existing house. Uh, and we're doing a horizontal spanchon, um, and some modifications towards the back of the house. Uh, we're adding a swimming pool. Uh, we're proposing a, 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 a pool house in the back and a landing that goes with all of the above. Um, so the existing house, well, you can see on the, uh, survey, there's existing sort of double house with this kind of passage through the middle. And we're going, and it's tight, it's tight to the north, uh, fifteen-foot setback. Uh, meaning there's a lot of room over to the south, and so we're spanning horizontally that way. Uh, the site has some topography, so from the front, kind of front landing, well, and then down towards the back, it drops about, uh, seven, eight feet. Uh, as you move back through the house, so there's a great difference. Uh, we're trying to, uh, maintain that, use it to the house's advantage, not try to create too much, uh, uh, new, uh, landscaping, I guess, uh, uh, regrading. But we do have a couple of footpaths that go towards backyard on either side of the house, um, that are essentially terraced down. So, again, existing house here, additional to the side, to the south. Um, existing driveway is basically going to be refurbished, um, and then pass going to the back. The swimming pool is sort of framed by the extension of the. Over here. Uh, permeable paper, it's stretched down, and then the, uh, uh, pool house is back in the square. Everything's within setback and within, uh, you know, as a value. Size-wise and, uh, setback-wise, it'll not come as one. Bound. The existing house, um, as you can see, this is a street, uh, view here. It's sort of set up like two boxes with this sort of entry, you know. Um, in fact, as you, here you can sort of see, as you go down, this is the. Let's see, we're going down, so the basement's marked for the food. And we're going to maintain that sort of integrity of the house, so the basement is exposed towards the backyard. Back to the, and, and right now, there, the site is pretty. The other thing is, uh, this house is tight, as I said, to the north side, so we're not extending anything vertically, uh, on the north kind of volume, given the sky.
Are you going up on any part of that house?
No, we're, well, we're extending, we're putting a stair to, that's, right now, there's a switchback stair inside. We're putting a stair now on the back of the house, so it's popping up slightly in the middle, just to get head clearance for landing. But we're not popping up the house otherwise.
And it's in the back anyway.
It's in the back, and, um, I'll walk you through the. I've kind of elaborated on that, what we're doing. Without boring you through the floor, floor plan is a, the lower level is basically extended kind of basement, uh, a terrace, uh, outdoor kind of screening porches and that kind of thing. We will see that. And before, first floor, uh, we're keeping that same kind of front entry. Between these two corners. And we're essentially creating a new entry, a modern entry, really the, what everyone's gonna use entry over here, next to the new proposed garage. So the idea is that we're adding another one of these boxes to the house, to have it stepping along. So we really wanted the addition to have some kind of aesthetic order that set up its original house. We're spinning the new addition over here towards the back, again, to adjust the kind of. Green, uh, pool from the neighbor to the south, that also creates sort of a cradle in the back. Shows your advice. And then upper floor, like I said, this is existing layout. The house is kind of unusual, has these muslin spaces, we're infilling it. And double-height spaces existing here, kind of semi-double-height space. This is all sitting as is, but we're relocating that from here and putting the stairs, a straight shot at the street, stair in the back. And there's a, a little outdoor terrace that we're proposing up here. It's on the roof.
There's a terrace on the roof?
Yes, excuse me. Terrace is a terrace above the first floor on the backyard.
Ah.
And I can point that to that. Plan. So again, to further distinguish these volumes, these are the original sort of boxes. We're, we're proposing to do a shingle, asphalt shingle for the typical roof on all three of these volumes. And then the in-between sort of passage zones will be a staining seam roof. This is in black. And the, the, a black staining seam and the shingles will be a charcoal side door. But there's just a difference in materiality or the different functions of the house.
I'll take a break.
Usually have an easel, don't we?
I, yeah, sometimes.
Yeah, we should.
I, I thought I'd just share.
No, we should have, we should have.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's okay. I'm good. I'm, I'm all right. Yeah. I should have brought an easel, but.
I have one.
Well, we have one.
It's okay.
This is, you're almost finished, right? You're getting there.
Don't worry about it.
Actually, I think, yeah.
So.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm, this is, again, I'm working on my. So the front facade, the existing house, basically these volumes, we're redoing the windows. And we're adding the garage over here. Again, it's in kind.
Yeah, you can put that on top.
All the latest conveniences.
I'll just leave it here. The, the door or the south facing the side.
You need the hand there?
She does.
It works. Okay.
I should have asked. Every time I drive up here, I'm like, gosh, I gotta say.
I think Anthony Vermaat draw brings his own every time.
Yeah, I just.
Doesn't that, doesn't like. Weaver and I, he gets to the gym like every day.
That would be more ridiculous if I was here trying to set it. Okay, so jumping back again, the facade, the shingle and the siding are the stain seam on the roof. The front facade material is, it, it's going to be. We're looking at a synthetic version of a cedar for longevity, but it'll be a lightweight for around a shit black side. Natural or hardy plank. Well, not hardy. They don't really make it. Brill's making a new product. There's, the house right around the corner has a really nice one.
The Borrel stuff or Brown?
Yeah, it's a product. They make several. What we're actually calling out on the specifications is, is actually a charred cedar that comes with a pre-finish color and is really quite nice. And that's what's shown in our.
Yeah, it's in the front, right?
So that's what we're currently holding. If we can't afford that.
Shu- shu-ki buns.
Yeah, well, well, we have another one. It's basically, it looks the same. It doesn't look like plastic. And it's just a synthetic because of the insects. The, the base of the foundation is clad in, in a tile, a vertical porcelain gray tile. And that pops up and sort of supports these windows in the front. So you'll see that read again as you.
So just, just let me stay, stay right here. So this shows that, that the original part of the house is in violation of the, of the permit law. But see, so everything else you're doing is, so this is, that portion is non-existent, pre-existing, non-conforming. Everything else you're doing is conforming. So you don't need to go design.
Can you repeat what that material is under the windows? I, I just.
Under the windows?
Yeah.
It's a tile. So it'll be, the foundation of the house. The new will be concrete. We're going to clad that with a tile. So it'll be a rectangular tile.
Staggered.
Colors.
Gray porcelain.
Yeah.
Is it shiny or?
No, it'll be matte.
Matte.
Yeah.
What's it made out of?
Porcelain.
Porcelain.
Oh, you did, oh. You said porcelain and I thought, nah, he didn't.
Like a bathroom floor or a wall, but they have exterior versions of it.
Oh, I'll be, okay.
It's a little bit more.
Fashion forward.
Yeah.
Is it shiny? Oh, no, you just said it's matte.
It's right here.
Oh, okay.
Or a more.
Yep.
Okay. Interesting.
That's nice. So you're gonna keep the facade of the house about the same color as now?
Well, right now, it's sort of a bluish gray as that kind of cheap siding.
Okay.
Placeward type exterior siding.
Right.
Textured 111 or?
It's sort of, it's sort of, yes, it's, and the problem is that there, there are some insects that are getting into it and they've been patching it up. We're taking it off and doing the new siding. And that's where the, you know, hard stuff, because it's resilient, or cedars are going to. And then we have a vertical mahogany sort of screen material that pops up again in these slots. So it's just a screen or slot, like two by four. Look like sand. Aesthetic, but it also acts as some kind of modern. Me and portion of the lower level. So this is an extension, a horizontal extension. We got some question about height. The new addition is really.
One-story addition.
I'm sorry.
So coming around the rear facade, you have the basement area that's partially exposed, but you have the addition here. This is where the stair tower is. And it goes up to the existing second floor at this level. And this is a kitchen with a, an eating kitchen area, a little planter box outside of it. And above that kitchen, there's that outdoor terrace here.
And those, those are, that's a walkout door there?
Yeah, so from the basement is where you, you can exit to go into the backyard and down here. And the last, or the door side, it's the same, that's where there's veterans or egress windows. This side, the grade has a step, stepping path. That tile wraps up towards the front facade here, then horizontal siding above it. And new windows throughout. Those are the Anderson four hundred series windows and the doors are the Anderson airline series. Which are decent for money. And then this is, these are, are a different type of windows, not an Anderson spec, it's a. Not power office, the.
Not Marvin?
Marvin, architectural series, because we're putting a little money into this portion for, giving this a stairwell. Trying to get the one sort of.
It looks down on the pool.
Yeah. Remembering wise. Front facade. It's a little dark, but you get generally the idea. The roof is a dark complexion that has the lighter horizontal siding, should let, below it. New windows on either side, a cracked corner, a screen at this entry. There's an entry underneath here. It's just a thin shadow. And the garage is meant to kind of read like one of these windows. So we didn't want it to just stand out like, oh, garage attached to a house. It's more like, we want it to look like it's an integrated a little bit more so. And then the back pool in the middle, screen and porch, this is a new master suite above it and a little outdoor space. It's blocked on this side, again, screening from the neighbor. It's all about kind of focus internally, more inverted, inverted. Little pool house there is.
So is, is there balcony terrace there on the, on the, yes?
Yes, there's an outdoor space here.
Under, underneath?
Underneath here, yeah. That you're seeing, this is actually a sliding door beyond, going inside the house. And there's, you can stand here.
How does that work in terms of the neighbor? I, I thought you might actually put that on the pool side.
Yeah, this is a view sort of the opposite direction. That's that outdoor space. And it's screened, that, that's why you said it, that kind of little screen. Privacy between the neighbor and what would be an outdoor, you know, space on it.
So that's the only outdoor terrace?
There's one.
I thought there was one on the roof of something.
It's here. There's one there.
Yeah, I was, I was curious if, if the higher one was, gave you a view of the neighbors and if it should be.
I, because of what my neighbor did to me, I put this shield right here. I don't think anyone was on the board when the neighbor next to me built this thing.
Thank you.
He didn't put a shield.
No, then they, then they see everything goes on, right? And, but anyways, it's way up high for everything. So it's been very, this, yeah, I find it obnoxious. So this, this neighbor is right there. So we put this sort of high parapet to block the view and sound from that edge.
Nice.
Just to, again, like this, it's all about kind of focusing to the backyard of this property. And then these are going to, this is redundant to that elevation I showed you, but I just wanted to note, there's a covered outdoor space underneath the house here. This is a screen and portion with the, these kinds of, I guess, that bit, the visual screen with the lattice work. And that's picked up here as well, again, because the neighbor that's at this house, want to give them privacy. The, the neighbor next door has a pool and they also have surrounding conifers and can't see in and out. So after, well, with that, and then after what we do here, they'll really have their visual connection between the two properties. And then again, back to this other side, cool, the pool house is tucked in the back corner, setback. That's that upper terrace we just talked about, the one that we mentioned before. And that's just a passageway. This is the same passageway.
Please. I'm sorry, any questions? Make any thoughts?
No, I think it's really pretty.
The landscaping plan, I'm representing the landscape designer, but I worked with her to develop this and she happens to be my wife. And she's very passionate about this kind of.
So you better be careful.
Yeah.
This is being recorded.
The roof plan, I hope you guys can see this. I'll bring it closer. So this is a roof plan.
Sure.
Where you're familiar with it now. The front, we are, there are several trees that are there that we have to pick out to make this work. And there's a mature tree. I'll be transparent, right here is an old oak that is leaning on the house. It's being removed. But we're replacing it with many, many, many new trees. So we feel like it's a decent compromise. The existing driveway is pretty much staying in kind. We're opening up a little bit. It's going to be a permeable paver. There is no hedge. I think, you know, without intent, well, maybe partially intention, potentially, this is a, following what has been discussed, discusses the overlay for the neighborhood as a symbol of what should be done in the neighborhood. So I feel like we're following all these rules that are being considered. So no hedge, permeable driveway, two paths to, to entrances. We, we have some turf around here, but we wanted to try to make this feel as naturalistic as possible. So, and obviously turf is not really native to the beach. We have a lot of beach grasses, but we do have a couple of areas with turf and some pachysandra, just fairly low maintenance. But getting to it along the path here, that's where we introduce a fence right here, that'll wrap around. Percode, and it stops back here in this lower portion. And along that fence line, we're proposing laurel, laurel cypress, which is a, the tighter, sort of more vertical and tighter cypress plants. Now, I've heard in the past, the last thing we really want people to do is put a barricade of the conifers or green giants around the properties, because it just has no, there's no, I don't know.
Walkability?
Yeah, it just has no soul.
Yeah.
And visually, it just finds meets the screening criteria, but it doesn't necessarily give life and interest to the landscape. And this client definitely wants to have something wonderful and whimsical and beautiful. So we do have that shield, but we also introduced several other species. So we're, we're bringing in the pachysem, or the hydrangeas that start to infiltrate along here, along this path here, which is pachysandra with the evergreens, but also we have the. But it's not just one thing constantly around here. As you do through each zone, there's a different sort of combination. There's a couple of key moments where we have a Japanese maple here in the back corner, sort of anchoring that one. We have an, she's kind of. This is the. The birch. So the birch sort of anchors the line of the pool and this terrace is a zone. And then a Japanese maple in the front yard is sort of like, you know, to the front yard. It's just a pop of color.
She watching?
She knows I'm here though.
So you're gonna relocate the sculpture?
A sculpture is gone.
Is it?
Yeah, I think the previous, I think you took it.
Oh. Okay. It was very unique. I thought that in the.
That tree is staying. Yeah, so there is a large, there's a large tree in the front that is remaining. And we're just planting smaller things below it.
So you mentioned the tree before, but you are gonna maintain it?
No, excuse me. There's a large tree right in this.
In, in the new plan?
There is an old tree that's right.
That you're gonna take out?
That would be in the way of the driveway. So unfortunately, that's. There's also another large tree here. We're keeping as many as we can. I forgot to mention, there's a new subject system being introduced for this porch because of the size and everything. That's being located back here. So that's why everything's pushed back, because the subject system has its own setback regulations for everything.
It's like ten feet, I think, right?
And, and we didn't want to encroach. The subject system with plants and that would reach in and destroy every time, because the roots will, will trash them. I mean, this, it's, it's, I'm sorry, wonderful, but we're, there are a long-term responsibilities involved.
So my only comment. I was just thinking that, I'm sorry, it's not in the overlay district plan, but it's a butterfly garden or a, some plantings. Or hummingbirds, butterflies, that sort of thing, to, to native plantings.
This is, so you'll see, most of these plantings are native. And specifically, this client, Terry, she has an actual severe allergic reaction to mosquitoes. I mean, most people hate mosquitoes, can't.
Okay.
So certain things like lavender and the catmint, they distract mosquitoes. And I'm on with, there are several other ones, but those two specifically. So we planted those all over the place. The, the grasses, of course, are, are native or feel more native than some other plants that we see around. But as for hummingbirds, you know, they really love the orange trumpet plants. They're invasive. But they, they're all over ours. And we don't have hysteria again. It's, actually, there might be one moment of hysteria that we're proposing, excuse me. I guess you think they love it. It really dropped it out. It is, it's, you need to maintain it. It's beautiful in the spring especially, but it's just picking up.
It's short-lived. The bloom. So, so any comments from the positive or negative?
I think it's very handsome. Normally, I would ask you if you could switch the garage so. Um, normally, I would ask you if you could switch the garage so that it doesn't face the road, but I see you can't because of the grade and. It doesn't look overwhelming, sometimes you have a garage wagging a house, but this is not doing that, so I think it's fine. And everything else looks really quite well thought out and nice.
Megan, you agree?
Yeah, I think it's a huge improvement from what it looks like now.
Chris? Okay. I'll make a motion that uh. That we approve the, the uh. Construction and landscaping of, of Ri- of the Richard's Drive House, which is what?
Yeah, what's the um, what's the square footage with the increase? The lot coverage or the overall, do you have a, overall? Two nine nine zero.
Just, just made it.
Okay, all in favor?
You got eight more feet to get.
Right. Don't worry, the contract is gonna take that.
Around here. Around here, uh, you know, there's somebody that'll complain if, if you're like the public.
I believe that was motioned and approved, right?
Yes.
Or you can leave it.
And is there anyone here from Metallock Lane? Okay.
We're gonna be loaded up next time.
He was here.
Oh.
And I don't know, because nineteen grand was on for discussion, I mean, as consent, and nobody's here for that. I called them at the last minute, but, so I don't know if you want to table, you know, she's a neighbor.
Okay, I'll take your motion to, to table.
Nineteen Grand Street?
No, I think, are we tabling twenty-two Metallock? Yeah.
And nineteen Rich.
Oh, who's that? You're not representing nineteen Grand Street?
That's the same guy.
Uh.
She.
Oh.
She wrote a letter about eleven grand. Yeah, she lived on Grand Street.
We'd like to hear your comments, please.
We've already approved, though.
Eleven Grand Street and nineteen Grand Street, so, but, uh. Are we going to enter team eleven letters?
No, you sent it to us on the emails you got in today, right?
No, we, we got.
Okay, so we'll read those. And u- unless you just want to say hi to us, we're gonna adjourn the meeting.
You, again, hi, but I'm, I'm not gonna.
You're not gonna say anything, okay?
What, can I, or?
Sure, great, can she speak?
I think she can, I mean, if you said, if you.
I'd like to hear a chance.
Yeah, if you're this patient, I, that's what I was trying to invite you to do.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, so I'm Sabina Stryder, and I live on twenty-five Grand Street. Um, sorry, okay, fifteen Grand Street, and we live there since nineteen ninety-four. Um, and share a hundred and fifty foot property line with eleven Grand Street. The two buildings, ours and eleven, are extremely close, the general setup between the property line is between nine and eleven feet. Now, our house was originally built in eighteen eighty-three by Zachary Field, whose family continued to live there for three generations. Until we bought the property for William Field in nineteen ninety-three. We raised our family there. Over many years, we are full-time residents and always have great respect for the integrity and uniqueness of the building. We restored very carefully the structure and left almost all of the original features intact. Um, the house, its outbuildings and trees remain one of the last truly original structures in the building. The original building next door, at eleven Grand Street, is indicated in the nineteen oh-two village map. And shows a very modest, one and a half story house, which you can see on that historic map. For email, but it's also. It was probably built around the same time as ours, late nineteenth century, as it shows the same diamond pink windows. It's a popular detail of that period. So we have significant concerns about the scale and design of the new house, as represented in the plans recently submitted by the architect. The east side of the building facing us will have, as proposed, eleven windows. Of which three are oversized floor-to-ceilings, with a total of fourteen windows facing the eastern side. These windows are part of a very long elevation and will overload our bedroom, kitchen, studio, back porch, and garden shed. It may seem that a twenty thousand five hundred square foot house only. Um, is not that large, however, this building is stretched out to a minimum of seventy-five feet sprawling structure. And then a pool and a hot tub is added on as well and squeezed into the reminder of the lot, so it's hardly a cottage that's described.
Just, just let me ask you this, you're not saying that the house is twenty-five thousand square?
She means twenty-five hundred.
That's what I thought, okay. I just want to be clear, because that goes to planning, that takes us out of the conversation.
Imagine that squeaked through?
In addition to the fact that the western side of our house will be blocked from natural light and will instead face a looming facade. Of windows overlooking our property, we're also very concerned about the construction and excavation upheaval. That could lead to the potential damage of our building due to the extreme vicinity of the two houses. The structure of our house is completely original from the old way, the glass windows. The seaweed horsehair and lath insulation still. To the original foundation, which might suffer greatly from the nearby construction. Um, and also one part has a crawl space, doesn't have a full basement, because it's. Original to eighteen eighty-three. The landscaping details are also cause for concern, one old mulberry tree has already been felled. The old trees on the southern western borders that have not been accounted for on the current lands. And the trees depicting in the digitally created images are not the existing ones. Uh, all Grand Street buildings between Division and Madison Street are less than twenty-five hundred square feet apart. From the newly built twenty Grand Street and two eight. Six Division Street properties excepted, both built by the same developer, G P Zach Harbor L O C. The erosion of the historic district with oversized properties on small village lots have become omnipresent. And historic homes are becoming the exception to the rule. With so many large houses morphing the historic properties, there's an enormous risk of creating a suburbia out of Grand Street. Which was once a quiet, almost rural, local neighborhood in the historic district. So we ask you that you carefully consider the scale of our neighborhood when reviewing the proposal for eleven Grand Street. So we may preserve the legacy and integrity of the Zach Harbor district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well written.
Yep, yeah.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
That the, so you're, you're at number fifteen.
Yes.
So you're between these two proposals, eleven and nineteen.
Yes, and I already, nineteen has directed a six-foot stockade fence all around. Also, the property of Don Smith and also via Oppenheimer, and even John Oppenheimer. And we're all not happy about it, but there's nothing we can do.
I, I, I just want to get to what's already built and what's being proposed. Now, on nineteen, they're just coming in, they're not here, but they're coming in for windows.
They came, they came over this summer to get the s- stockade fence, and it's in place.
So, but you were expressing, because that's about eleven, I'm just reading, because we don't have.
Plans, yeah.
But their application is for an amendment of previous approvals. So, I, I'm not sure, you're describing. A large addition, and it could be quite objectionable, and you're very close to it, and all sorts of things. I'm only picking up on the detail here, that this, they're coming to amend what has been approved.
No, I have the grants here.
I'm just, I'm just reading the application.
Right.
So it may be a, a very large amendment to something, I, I don't really know, but I think it's important, and this, this uh, preservation forum that we just posted. A few days ago, with the various chairs, all the chairs being there and explained. Um, oftentimes, someone doesn't realize that something's already been approved. And, and, and that's, and that's the case here, I, I don't know what the details are, but.
Yeah, the previous plans were by an architect, it was submitted by uh, Kate Goldman, and it was actually by, by.
Vermandow?
Yes, and these plans were approved.
Okay.
But they were quite different.
It's still, it's still an amendment to those.
To that.
To those.
I'm just trying to make the point that.
But very large.
You could be describing something that is indeed to you quite objectionable. But there's a limit to what this board can do with respect to what's already been approved.
Right, and.
It could have been approved years ago, I don't know any of the details. But I mean, that, that can be a problem that isn't immediately obvious.
The approved plans are quite different.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so the board will want to take that into account, because to say that it's an amendment to something previous, maybe that's not quite. You know.
Right, because.
I don't know.
Right, so the implication is that this is a significant change to what's approved, and so the, the question is.
But I think that's, that's for you, the board and the building inspector too.
We'll have to determine.
Reviewed both, because I have, I have both, um, the approved and the proposed.
Since it's being tabled, why don't we drive by ourselves?
Yeah, I just wrote it on top of my sheet.
I'd like to know what is actually.
So this is, this, I think, I think we're overstepping our bounds here, yes.
Oh, well, let's see these.
Yeah.
But I'd like to know what's actually been approved already and what's being proposed, so.
I just, this is the facade. And I don't know, that's from the historical, you know the house.
Yeah, I know it.
Um, what?
Okay, so.
That's not proper.
Okay. Okay.
Right.
And it also says, swimming pool and landscaping.
Yes.
Yes, plus amendments to the, to the approval, so something's been approved already, and now they want to amend it.
Amendment and to add.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, is there anybody else uh, remotely who, who we tabled who wants to make a presentation today? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to conclude the meeting on. I need a second.
I moved, oh, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, thank you.
Not that long at all.